Flag shot, and then you started down the hill. It was just unbelievable. Arizona, snowstorm.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for joining us tonight for the Hubbard County Planning Commission Board of Adjustment.
I think you're thinking it's on. Yep, it is.
Bear with me, please, while I go through and read the meeting procedure. All persons in attendance at the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment, the PCBOA meetings, are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this a manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may also view them. Please turn your phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The chair may terminate its speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conducts or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 p.m. on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. Planning Commission business is conducted first, followed by the Board of Adjustment business. The chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicant to come forward to the presenter's table, state his or her name, address, and for the record, and explain his, her, or their request. The PCBOA will then discuss the agenda item with the applicant. The chair will then ask for public comments on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker per agenda item unless the chair allows a speaker additional time. The chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conducts or remarks. When the chair recognizes a speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by the recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed towards the PCBOA. Please do not repeat comments already made by the previous speakers. The chair reserves the right to ask a group with similar comments to appoint a spokesperson. If written comments have been submitted to the PCBOA, please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the PCBOA. After everyone wanting to speak on an agenda item has done so, the chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item, and no further public comment will be taken after this point. The chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The PCBOA will then continue its discussion on an agenda item, and the chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the PCBOA will develop findings of facts for conditional use permit and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on an agenda item, the PCBOA will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 p.m. and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 p.m. The no new agenda items shall be considered after 9:45 p.m. The PCBOA may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 p.m. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date or time, preferably immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m., and no further public comment will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The PCBOA, through the chair, may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. We have no planning commission or approval of any minutes and no old business, but the new business we have is the final plat application of destination estates by Ben and Tammy Ott, part of the southeast quarter of the southeast quarter, section 28, township 140, range 33, Nevis Township, parcel 21.28.01900. The applicants are requesting to plat 26-plus acres into seven lots. And I believe we've received notification that neither the applicants nor their authorized agent are going to be present, but I will ask, just in case, if the applicants are present. Seeing that they are not, we do have the opportunity to move forward as the board. Anybody have any questions on moving forward?
Yeah, I do. There's a thing in our packet that talked about the remainder parcel. Is that Outlet A, the driveway in? Is that what is remainder parcel? Because I can't find it. And the reason I bring it up is that it talks, it gets some long, lengthy discussion about it, but it talks about, let's see, over here. An easement, and/or egress along, what am I trying to find it here now? In essence, it refers to that part that we, in our variance, allowed to be incorporated. The way the words read, it's only a, an easement for that area. Does that matter at this point? Here it says, along the south line, said 313 for a distance of 100, such and such. Come on, here we go. Come on, Ken.
Eric, the paper that Ken is referring to is different than what you have on the screen.
Well, yeah, it'd be helpful to know.
Yeah.
What are you reading from, Ken?
Where did you get this paper?
This is a packet.
Yeah, I'm not finding it online.
Packet.
It has an underlined mark where it says remainder parcel, Eric.
Yeah, along the south. Come on, hold on.
I have found it. I would believe it's, as far as my packet goes, it is right after the second page.
Oh, yeah, here.
Right there.
Parcel subject to an easement for ingress, egress, and utility purposes over and under the south 37 feet of the north, such and such. You know, that section, that thing that we gave a variance on. It calls it out as a, an easement, as opposed to part of this actual thing. But that may be the state. If they haven't done the transfer at this point, this would still be accurate.
So there.
Right here. Does that matter, is what I'm asking?
There technically is still an easement that runs over this initial stretch.
Yeah.
That benefits this lot.
Okay.
That's outside the plat.
We're proving this, although there's an easement, and even though we did give a variance that that could be taken away and added, actually, to, I guess, what would be Lot A, Outlet A. And if they haven't done the paperwork, this is accurate. It's a technical thing, so I.
There's an additional piece that Eric's going to explain to you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So this is the stretch where that easement also lies over part of it, the north 37 feet of this.
Yeah.
And then it comes up 33 feet in an L, and that services, gives access to this lot. So the un, or the open issue is
Oh, okay.
That this lot can legally access County 13 through this outlot, and they aren't going to be obligated to
Okay.
Put anything toward the maintenance of that road.
So this is an easement for people to access that second piece? Okay.
Then we have the same issue with the three tracks on the south side of the plat that have easement rights to use this road. And initially, there was talk that they would be brought into some kind of a maintenance agreement. But I I haven't seen anything to show that that's happened, but that'll be a future.
Never thought of that before, when we did it before, that these people still need that easement. Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you, Ken, for pointing that out, as far as the information goes, yeah. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and open for a public comment. Seeing no public comment, I will close public comment. For the record, I just wanted to read that the preliminary plat was acted on by the Planning Commission on its August 2024 meeting and approved by the county board on September 17th. Variance 57-V-24 was granted at the October 2024 Board of Adjustment meeting to allow the initial 314 feet of the proposed private road to be straightened out by conveying the south 37 feet of adjacent parcel 21.28.01700 to the plat. The required title, commitment, and letter from a third-party licensed surveyor stating the plat is mathematically correct are also included in the application. And the county engineer provided comments on the preliminary plat application that she didn't have any issues with the proposed private roads approach on County 13. So there are no outstanding items, and all ordinance requirements have been met. Does anybody, other members have any comments on this?
Madam Chair, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mike. Thank you.
I make the motion that we recommend to the county board who approve this as they've met everything that we've asked for in this process.
Thank you, Mike. Anyone for a second, please?
This is Timothy. I'll second that motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Mike to recommend approval to the county board to approve this final plat application of destination estates by Ben and Tammy Ott, with a second by Tim. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye.
Next item on the agenda would be the Board of Adjustment and approval of the minutes for the October 28, 2024, meeting minutes. Anybody have any questions or comments towards the minutes? Anyone care to make a motion?
This is Larry. I move we accept the minutes.
Okay, thank you, Larry. Do I have a second?
This is Mike. I'll second.
Thank you, Mike. Larry made a motion to approve the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes of October 28, 2024. Mike, second in the motion. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy. I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
This is Mike. I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica. I vote aye. The meeting minutes have been approved as presented.
Okay, next item, we have old business. Variance application 56-V-24 by Tom Jubarian, lots five and six, blocks three, Buena Vista Beach, section 19, township 141, range 34, Lake Emma Township on Potato Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel 16.48.01500. The applicant is requesting a variance from section 902.1 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance to excavate more than the permissible volume of soil in a steep slope. Do we have the applicant's, yes, if you could please come to the presenter's table? And you may state your name and address for the record, please.
Tom Jubarian, 9025 Archer Court North, Maple Grove, Minnesota.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jubarian, and go ahead and proceed with your application.
Yeah, thanks for having me this evening. I know, I watched the meeting last month, kind of what was recommended as far as changing. I did go out to the property and did a better job of actually measuring and having a much more accurate drawing as well, as well as flagging the area that is to be excavated, as well as flagging both of the property lines. Just ran a string between the two points that were already there with the posts in the ground. I guess as far as anything else I can say about the project, it is a smaller area than I had presented initially. As you'll notice, it's 15 feet shorter. This also preserves some of the slope towards the lake. It ends up being further away from the lake, and the natural slope then of any, you know, rainwater runoff would be back towards the pavement as the natural slope of the property goes. I also outlined on one of the documents that I sent in with the topography map with the outlined piece of grading there, as well as the proposal to put erosion fencing as needed to prevent any of the slope from washing from west to east on the property.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jubarian. Do we have any questions from the board at this time?
I guess if I might add too, sorry, that as far as reasoning behind the project, just to make the lot more usable, currently, there's a narrow driveway coming in. As soon as you park a car in this narrow driveway, there's really no other space to recreate of any kind. Even, you know, tenting or putting a camper there for the weekend, there's just really not enough space to allow that. I feel like this would give enough space to have a more usable lot for recreation during the summertime primarily. I have no plans of building on the lot. I know that was a question that if there would be any building to outline where that would be, I have no plans of that. Don't see that in the foreseeable future for right now.
Okay, thank you for the additional information. If I don't have any other questions from the board, I'm going to go ahead and open for public comment. And seeing no public comment, I will close public comment. Questions, Ken?
I, you talking about a camper? Are you talking about a fairly large mobile home-type camper, or?
No, just a pull-behind travel trailer, I guess you could call it.
Then why would you need to do any grading at all if that's all you were going to use it for? In order to do this, which is in contrary to our Shoreland Management Ordinance, you could easily put a pop-up camper on that property without moving any dirt at all, or maybe a few feet off of the edge of the thing. We have to answer positively one of the things which is part of the requirements for, is there a practical difficulty? There is no, there's no difficulty for you to put a camper, if that's what your plan is, on that property the way it is. And so we can't answer that question in a positive way. I don't know if I'm making sense to you or at all. And the other thing is, when I look, when I look at the two drawings, they're very inconsistent. When I look at the one, this one here, you could take maybe eight to 10 feet off, if this is correct, and only move a couple feet of dirt. So it just seems what you're asking for is very excessive compared to what you're saying you want to do with the property or what any kind of minor alterations might be, so.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. I just think that that space that you drive into is about the width of a car, give or take a couple feet on each side. Well, that doesn't give you any space to, as if you've ever, you know, used a camper. If you have an awning, then you have your, you know, you're kind of set up out in front of you. By that point, if you, even if you use the east side towards the east neighbor that's flat, you would be basically on the line by the time you're essentially set up, and.
Well, once you get past the hill, it kind of opens out and flattens out a little bit. If you went a little bit farther, it would be okay.
Well, it starts to go, it starts to go down towards the lake then.
Well.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't agree that there's adequate space there currently.
The point is, you could do substantially less disturbance to that property if all you're going to do is put a camper on it. You wouldn't have to take 20 feet off of that hill. You could get by with five feet or maybe 10 feet, which would be a minimal amount of impact. That's my question. I just.
What would you say the impact of taking 20 versus 10 would be? You're saying it's a smaller impact? I mean, I know that it's twice as far, but it doesn't seem like it would impact any differently.
You're basically changing the entire character of that property. You're literally peeling off that entire hill, and you've not provided any information. If you do it, you're going to have a 10-foot bank within 10 feet of the neighbor's property. You can't just have a bank unless you're going to build a retaining wall or whatever, and I don't see anything like that in your plan.
That's, this is Tim. That's where I agree with Ken. I just don't see the detail I need to see to make the decision. Holding the bank back, the camper you're talking about, it might be 20 feet, it might be 40 feet, I don't know what it is. Do we know if you need that big? Well, it's maybe just because you want it. And we don't really base our variances on wants as much as need. And that's without a lot of information. I can't be in favor of it.
Got it.
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mike.
My concerns run on the same line. When I look at those elevations and what's being cut, it looks like we're cutting eight feet of elevation, but there's no plan on drainage, there's no plan on what the slopes are going to be going in all the different directions. If a retaining wall is needed, what's going to protect that bank going to the south towards the neighbors where it's so close? So I agree, there's just not enough information here. For me, it may be a good idea and doable, but without all of the needed information, I can't be in support of this.
Thank you, Mike. I appreciate all of your comments. I have to agree myself, looking back, you know, we requested four items. You did comment that you don't have a future plan for a home at this time. A more concrete plan of exactly what you're proposing would be ideal for us because we do have five questions to answer affirmatively. We asked for a stormwater management plan as well to help with that erosion and control, especially for the neighboring property with their septic. Anytime you excavate that amount of material, you're jeopardizing the stability, and it could be compromised with all that excavation. So I agree. I wish that you had had a little bit more information for us as far as that detail goes. But I'm in the same situation. I don't have enough information on this application at this time to support such a request.
And is there an amount that, I know Ken mentioned 10 feet. Is there an amount that this committee would feel more comfortable on? It feels like when, and maybe this is just my issue, but coming into this, I feel like there's no real guidelines of like, hey, this isn't really a good request in the first place type of thing to, you know, spend the money and get things done here, you know, a thousand bucks essentially out of pocket to then, you know, come with, hey, this is just not a very good request. And it would have been really nice to know, like, hey, when you send this in, this isn't a great request, it's not a need, it's a want. You know, those type of things, I feel like it's kind of real gray.
Right. I believe you were given guidance from the Environmental Services Office on what the criteria that we were looking for was given to you per email.
Correct.
And so some of that documentation has been provided, but unfortunately, not all of it has been provided. That would be, one of the situations would have been helpful for us this evening. Again, prior to that, when you go into the Environmental Services Office, just visiting with them, you know, having a more detailed plan on your application, exactly typically when someone comes in to have a steep slope removal, they have exactly, this is the house I want to put up, this is where it's going to fit. So when we go out to a lot and we look at the view, and they actually have things staked out for us, it is so far away from the side lot lines, it's so far from the lake, everything is staked and measured. So, and that's when we go out, and that's what we approve. When we approve something, we approve it to the point, to exactly as described on your site plan. And if your site plan doesn't match, as we've discussed, some of your items don't match exactly what's verbally being said and what's on paper doesn't always match. When we went out to the site, we also demonstrated things didn't quite line up with the drawing that we had. So therefore, again, we have to have things to match exactly because, as a group, that is what we're approving. The site plan, the setbacks, the marks, the ordinary high watermark, those are the items, and the steep slope and the excavation. So that's why we need such details.
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
May I add that we can only act on what's in front of us? And this particular proposal doesn't have enough information for us to say this is what's going to happen. It just shows this much dirt, this dimension is where we're taking it from. But again, those slopes, how we're dealing with it, that detailed information is important to us because we can't approve something without knowing what the end result is. And with this, I just can't see what the end result would be.
Give you some information there that you were looking for, Mike?
Yeah, and I mean, I guess I'll be honest, this is, you know, I don't have a house plan, which I think would make things easier. Well, I mean, I have a house plan, I just don't have any plans to build at this point. So I think once, and honestly, I might just be really early in this process where this is a normal ask and a normal proposal, if there's a house that's going to be going right there, and that's the, you know, your poured concrete wall is now your retaining wall and, you know.
And just so you don't stomp ahead and put the horse in front of the cart, that you don't want to disturb anything not knowing what your future plans are, because if you go through and excavate a lot of stuff, then you could be disturbing possibilities of your drain field sites and everything. So you don't want to do that either. You know, that's why, again, you want to make sure exactly what you're proposing. Otherwise, if you make changes to the ground, you can't go back and fix it.
Right, which is, I did have that drain field site developed for that reason.
We're accustomed to going to, excuse me, to a piece of property where they stake out either the house or structure or whatever, or a camper in this case, and then also flag what you're proposing being done. Okay, if I could walk out there and you said, all right, I'm going to put a 25-by-10-foot camper here. Okay? And I need an awning, a little space here. And then we can look and see, well, all right, yeah, it'd be convenient to take two, three feet off that hill, four feet off that hill to make it comfortable. But we need to know what, what, you know, and maybe way downstream, you might want to build a home, that's a whole new game, and so on. But if you say, this is what, right now, I want to place on this property, okay, and this is the space I need, then we could look. You could cut out, say, eight feet of that bank and only affect about two feet of terrain, which is a lot less dirt movement and protects the neighbor, if we could see that, but without knowing what dries it. There's no way that we can just say, oh, yeah, you can go tear off that whole hill, that's just fine. Follow what I'm trying to get at? We're used to seeing it staked out, and so we know exactly, if we came back, what we would see. And this is open, you know, an open deck for you to just peel off that hill without any, without any information about how you're going to protect the. information about how you're going to protect the slope on it, et cetera. Follow what I'm trying to get at? And I think that's what we've been saying. You need to be more explicit about what you initially want to do and what drives, what is reasonable to accommodate that relative to the grading of that hillside, so. Is this for your personal use, or are you going to rent it to somebody, or what's...
No, just personal use.
So you'd be putting a camper on there?
If, yeah, if I chose to put a camper on it, yeah.
Okay, I'll just close my piece.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Again, personally, this is my, and my thoughts, my opinions, I'm not prepared to move forward either. The excavation proposals based on the size and erosion control issues have not been met, the shore, stormwater management plan has not been provided, and the stabilization efforts, if needed, for the neighboring property or for such of the steep slopes. So I'm going to recommend denial, so I will make a motion to deny the application and adopt the staff's findings of facts.
This is Timothy. Oh, go ahead, Larry. Go ahead, Larry.
This is Larry, I'll second.
Okay, I made a motion to deny the application and adopt the staff's findings of facts. Larry seconded the motion. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye.
Mr. Javarian, you'll be receiving a decision letter from the Environmental Services Office about the meeting tonight, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've given a little option to delay it longer again. I guess we've dealt with it long enough, okay.
Next item on the agenda is new business. Variance application 61-V-24 by Greg and Suzanne Brown. Lots 16 through 19, Block 3, Highland Park, Section 9, Township 140, Range 33, Nevis Township on Deer Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 21.40.02300. The applicants are requesting a variance from Section 902 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a proposed grading and a steep slope that exceeds the permissible of all we know. We have the applicants available. Will you please come to the presenters' table? Thank you, and I believe we also have Mr. Johnson as the authorized agent. Yes, if you both would please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Greg Brown, 707 Circle Drive, Marchtown, Iowa, but our property is...
Speak to the microphone.
Our property is 24350 Falcon Road, outside of Nevis.
Thank you, sir.
Carrie Johnson, 711 Winona Street, Northfield, Minnesota.
Thank you, and you may proceed with your request.
The site plan that was submitted is to show a small, modest addition to an existing cabin that is on a steep slope. We met with Demi out there, and she said it was like a 20% slope, so we would need a variance to do this. The cabin, existing cabin that was built in '94 is basically all on a steep slope. It has a walkout basement that was allowed at that time. The existing kitchen and dining area, the request is to expand that, and the logical place is to go to the east of the existing kitchen, dining area. The existing kitchen would become the dining area, and then we have a new kitchen. And then, the expansion on the lower level is to add a bedroom and a bathroom in that area under the same footprint as the upper area. We did look at other areas going to the south, and there is an existing well, I think when we met with you on the site, we pointed that out. There isn't, and even on the other side of the property, which is a long ways from the existing kitchen and living area, doesn't make a lot of sense to add a kitchen on that side. We have designed it where the existing, we have to move more dirt than what is allowed, put foundation in, but the existing grade, when it's completed, will be the same, as I pointed out on the site visit. I mean, slightly, within a few inches anyway, and we showed that on a section that we submitted to the board, along with a site plan, that showed the location and the setbacks and the property lines, et cetera. This is a section that you're looking at now on the screen. The slashed areas shows the approximate excavation required to put footings in, and once that dirt is removed and the footings is in, then the grade and the dirt that's removed gets put back to the existing grade.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Johnson. I appreciate your information. For the record, I would just like to let everyone know that the application is to remove 187 cubic yards of material in the steep slope in order to build the addition. The actual building itself already meets the ordinary high watermark setback of 100 feet, so it complies. So basically, we're just looking at the excavation. Septic on the property is also compliant, and the new design is already included in the application, since they want to add a bedroom, so. Do I have any questions from the board members before I open for public comment?
This is Mike. When we were out there and we looked at the site, it's my understanding that all of the upside of the slopes is actually going to be block walls, and where it's excavated out, and then it's block walls, and then the slope restored all the way around those block walls. Am I correct with that?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions?
This is...
Oh, go ahead, Ken.
Go ahead, no.
This is Tim speaking. On the lower, on your lower-level cabin addition there, you've got the new bedroom and new bathroom. Are they going to use the same access to walkout that you've always had?
The same one, yes. You can see the, that goes into the family room. I think it's labeled "family room" down there.
Okay, that's the way that you're going to go to that?
Yes, because we don't want to change the grade on the northeast side of that addition. So there won't be any access outside of that grade area. It'll be through the family room to the north side of the cabin, which is the present access now on that lower level.
The, quite, this is Ken. I realize the variance is for moving dirt to basically accommodate the full construction of new kitchen and everything on upper level, on these bedroom, bathroom on the lower level.
That's correct.
Okay, but you have other things that you're proposing to do from a construction standpoint? Pull the microphone over towards you.
Yes, yes, there are some other additions. If you zoomed out a little, I can go over those. These areas are not on a steep slope.
The, tell me about the construction of, on the front of the structure. There's a deck there now, right?
There's a deck, yes.
Or does the upper level project out over it now?
There's a roof and then a deck, and it's open, and partial, part of that existing will be enclosed.
Okay, so the construction there is just going to fill in that open area underneath that bump out, if I can call it now?
Yes.
And you're adding a bedroom down there?
Yes.
And when you're all done, how many bedrooms are you going to have?
It'll be the same amount of bedrooms as it is right now. One of the, if you go to the lower level again, in the, it would be the southeast corner of the existing cabin. It is a bedroom right now, and it really can't be called a bedroom, because there's no way of putting in egress. So that would be converted into an office area, as we marked it on the plan. So then, we have a new bedroom, but we're taking a bedroom away and making it an office. Granted, it's not preventing anyone from sleeping in that room, but it's not a legal bedroom.
And the lower level that shows storage there, that's basically, you're filling in that area and it's going to be for storage?
Yes.
Okay, so you're not adding any more bedrooms on that level?
No.
And you're adding no bedrooms on the upper level, then?
That's correct.
Okay.
And the only other addition for this is a small adding on to the backside of the existing detached garage for additional storage.
And that's, what, about a 10 by 30-some addition?
Eight by the width of the garage. Yeah, and that is not part of the steep slope either.
So it's eight feet you're doing. The existing storage area that's there, I guess the question is, why? I guess you can do it, but why are you adding the storage to the garage?
For, or, first of all, there is a bathroom in that area, it isn't used right now, and that is coming out, because you can't park two cars in there. And then, the other is for equipment to, they're storing it right now underneath the deck, and they want it inside, like kayaks, canoe, and...
So your plan, your plan is to remove that bathroom in the garage?
Yes. It's never been used. We've been there since '97, and it's never been used.
Okay.
And it keeps us from having two cars in the garage.
Yeah, okay.
So we got bicycles, we've got canoes, we've got kayaks.
My line of question was along that, because that existing storage looks fairly nicely finished off, it has a nice floor and everything in it. There's some concern that maybe your intent was to use that as a guest room, would be like a guest cabin or sleeping areas?
No intent, no.
No?
Nope, never have. Nobody ever wanted to be out there. We've never been out there, it's been totally storage, and we need more storage space.
Okay, okay.
Don't swear to that.
All right, thank you. At this time, I'm going to go ahead for the record and open for public comment. And seeing no public comments, I will close public comments. Any other questions for the board? I would like to note, I see that you do have gutters on the property now, and you do intend to place gutters on this, okay. So then you wouldn't mind if a condition was placed as well, just to ensure that they get put on there, the gutters be placed on the lakeside roof of the new addition with downspouts, properly discharging the stormwater away from the lake?
Yep, no problem.
Okay. Any members prepared to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion to accept this with the condition that gutters be placed and directed appropriately to eliminate or prevent erosion on the lakeside of the addition, and accept the staff findings of fact.
I think the current septic system is non-compliant, right? Do you need...
The next applicant.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Do I have anyone for a second?
This is Larry, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the application as presented in the site plan with the condition that gutters to be placed on the lakeside roof of the addition with the downspouts properly discharging stormwater away from the lake for potential erosion concerns. And a second by Larry, when Mike also adopted the staff's findings of facts. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye, this is Ken.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
This is Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. Your application has been approved. You will receive a decision letter from the Environmental Services Office later this week, and with the guidance on what is to be done next. Permits and such.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Yep, have a good evening. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have variance application 62-V-24 by Robert and Ann Moore, parts of government lot 1, Section 19, Township 141, Range 34, Lake Emma Township on Potato Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel 16.19.00200, the applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from Section 502.2 of the Shoreland Management Ordinance for a dwelling located within the 100-foot ordinary high watermark structure setback. You may go ahead, come to the presenters' table, please. Go ahead and state your name and address for the record. My gosh, she doesn't want to do this all by herself.
I know. Ann Moore, and our address is 8101 Norman Dale Lake Boulevard in Bloomington, Minnesota.
And you, sir?
Robert Moore, 8101 Norman Dale Lake Boulevard.
Okay, thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Moore. Go ahead and proceed with your request, please.
Well, it's kind of by happenstance, we were just talking to our contractor, because he's got a lot of projects in the next, like, five years, and so we were talking about, you know, when should we consider something? And so he just kind of walked the property, and Brian came out, and they happened to notice that the corner of our southwest, is that it? The southwest corner was 92 feet instead of 100.
So Brian measured it, Brian, I was there, Brian measured it 92, and I said, well, okay, what do we need to do? And he said, well, you have to apply for an after-the-fact variance. So that's why we're here.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so just for clarifications, I'll just reiterate, the house was constructed by permit in 1978, was permitted to be built in compliance with the 100-foot ordinary high watermark structure setback. Staff was on-site this year building, contractor discussed a proposed project, and staff measured the house at southwest corner at 92 feet from the ordinary high watermark. You purchased the property in 2020, and are seeking to bring the structure into compliance with this variance application, so that you have desired building permits in the future, correct?
Correct.
Perfect. And so, the septic is non-compliant, you have submitted a design for the new septic.
Yes.
Yep.
And at this time, that is where it remains, as you haven't moved forward with any type of permit with it yet, just the design.
Correct, correct, yep. We have the contractor come out and determine where it needed to be located, and we're planning on that in the spring.
Any questions from the staff? And before we start, there's nobody in the audience, but for the record, I need to open and close public comments. And seeing no public comment, I will close public comments. Thank you.
This is Mike. This proposal looks in order, with the understanding that we probably need a couple of conditions. One, that the, because the current septic is non-compliant, that our ordinance requires that the variance approval must include a condition, that the STS must be properly upgraded to a new design, to the newly-designed STS. So that would be one condition that I would recommend. And the second is, is that only that portion of the existing house that encroaches, I'm going to read this, only the portion of the existing house located within the 100 ordinary high watermark setback is allowed to encroach on the 100-foot ordinary high watermark setback. Any future additions to the house must comply with the 100-foot ordinary high watermark setback, and if the house is ever rebuilt, the new dwelling must fully comply with all setbacks. Those would be the two conditions that I would like to see on this proposal.
Thank you, Mike. This is Veronica. I agree, I have the same written from the staff as well. Do you understand those conditions that he stated there?
Yes.
Perfect. Yep. Any other questions or comments?
No.
Nope, looks good to go. Okay.
Could I ask just one point of clarification?
Yes.
When we're talking about septic, that includes tanks and drain, like a mound or anything else, right? It's the whole system.
Whatever is failing that is non-compliant with your new, with your system, must be updated to fit with your proposal, and if this gets forward... And if this gets forward to be approved, okay?
Okay, got it.
Anyone prepared to make a motion?
This is Mike. I'll make the motion that we approve this approval with the two conditions that I mentioned. First being the STS on the property is non-compliant, a design for the new STS was received and approved by staff. The shoreline man ordinance requires that the variance approval must include the condition that the STS must be properly upgraded to the newly designed SSTS. And the second condition is that only the portion of the existing house located within the 100 ordinary, 100-foot OHW setback is allowed to encroach on the 100-foot OHW setback. Any future additions to the house must comply with the 100-foot OHW setback. And if the house is ever rebuilt, the new dwelling must fully comply with all setbacks and I'll accept the staff findings of fact.
Thank you, Mike, for the motion. Do I have a second?
This is Ken, I'll second the motion.
Okay, Mike made a motion to approve the after-the-fact variance application with the conditions he stated and adopted the staff's findings of facts. Ken seconded the motion. Timothy, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
And this is Veronica, I vote aye. Your application has been approved. You will receive a decision letter from Environmental Services Office later this week, so giving you the next steps, okay? All right, thank you very much. Have a good evening.
And a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Yes. And Ken, I hope you have a safe trip to the airport. Okay, next item, miscellaneous or communications? I know we need to discuss the December meeting with the after-the-fact view situation.
Yes, yeah, the, just a second, I think you've all received the December agenda. We've got one, two, three, four items on it, so same as this evening. And what we need to have the boards input on would be, one of the applications is a variance for this island in Beltane. The improvements are down on this end of the island. Given the time of year and the state of lake conditions, the lot view is on December 12th. I'd be very surprised if we're gonna have good ice to allow crossing from the mainland to the island at that point. So the question is if the board wants to consider the application in December, given the likely inability of being able to view things on the island, or if you'd like to table it until the January meeting. The February meeting would be the latest that we could consider this within the 120-day window. We could go that route. The offset would be that you're likely gonna have snow covering things if you've got good ice to allow us to get out there. The applicant owns this lot on the mainland, so that would be my guess as to where we would cross to get from here to there. And that's a healthy distance, so it's not gonna be conducive to walking, it's just under a quarter mile.
This is Mike, speaking for myself, I will not go across unsafe ice nor expect anyone else. And even if we table it and if we were to go out there, my concern, and it is snow-covered, we still may not be able to act upon it. We could certainly take that, table it and I guess see what the weather brings us, but this is problematic for, on a timing standpoint based it's on an island. And the immediate question is, when can we get there safely? And I would say, agree that December's not a possibility. And then when we get there, will we be able to, which is the second part of it, when we finally schedule it? If we go out there and can see things, I don't know how we could act upon, on this, this with, but I'll wait and see what happens once, once we get there, whenever that might be.
Eric, how significant, you may have said it, I couldn't hear well, how significant are the non-conformances? You talked about a couple of platforms and what else did I see here? A couple, three things. Are they real bad issues that we really should see them in, in their summer condition? Or are they the kind of thing, once we look at it, we'll say, oh, they are, that's okay? I mean, your perspective on it?
What's on the screen, there's a, this house that was built that doesn't meet the 100-foot setback from the west or the east and kind of the southeast. There's a platform on the west side that is within the 100-foot setback, and then there's a deck on the main level and a platform beneath it on the east side that don't meet the 100-foot setback. And then up in this area, there's a septic system drain field that was installed that doesn't meet the 150-foot setback from the OHW. So those are the four issues.
Well, did, did he, did he have a compliance on what was existing?
We received that as part of the variance application, but the system was never inspected when it was installed initially. They didn't request the inspection that they were supposed to request.
Is, is the setback, the fact that the drain field is not 150 feet and we've allowed seven? What I'm trying to get at, we ain't gonna get, it's not likely we're gonna make him move the house or tear it down.
Well.
And, and what I'm trying to get is, how significant is it? And the drain field, if it's less than 75 and compliant, we've allowed that in the past, would we make him tear it up? I mean, those are rhetorical questions, but in the context of a couple of platforms, the rest of the stuff, we're not likely to force him to change it, are we?
Well, I don't know that we wanna have that conversation until the actual hearing, but it's
Okay.
As far as what you would, what you would be needing to be able to see, those are the items.
Well, I'm coming from my standpoint, if we really think we should look at those, I don't see us doing it until May or June. Okay, and I don't, you know, I'm, I'm not overly sympathetic about the legal thing because any, I think any judge who would understand why we can't act on the variance wouldn't give him three more months or whatever his time, time is limited is right now. It's actually, if you were supportive of it, am I making sense?
Yeah, and that, that part, we don't know. I, I learned today that the court, the next court date for this matter was rescheduled for the end of February. I don't know exactly what date in February, but that's the update on that end.
Again, I reiterate, without seeing it, I wouldn't, wouldn't be able to support it. And based on how long this has been going on, is, I think it's essential, so I think we need to table it at least till January and then make a judgment call on whether we can see it and whether, what we can see is, is what we need to see. If there's three feet of snow, then it, either they extend it or, or we deny it, I, I think at that point. But I can't vote on anything without seeing it.
Geez, what about a quarter mile walk?
Maybe it wouldn't be that hard to pick it up and move it. They move stuff all the time.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm just pushing it a different, couple of different directions to come to the same conclusion as Mike is, I wanna see it.
Yeah.
In its condition.
So, my, my opinion is I doubt we're gonna have conducive conditions on the 12th of December to allow view, so my thought would be out of courtesy to the applicant to say, we aren't even going to attempt to view it at December. And then the question is, do I say it looks as though the board will probably table this? Or do I say it's likely the board's gonna say, no, we're gonna act on it at December?
I think the message is, is that we don't believe we can act upon it. We can't have site views in December, so we table until January and, and at, maybe at the December meeting, we have a better idea whether we can get there and what we can see. That would give them the most, I think, latitude. Otherwise, we can table to February, but I don't know how that coincides because what it, I think the applicant needs to know, it's setting up for a denial unless we're able to have the necessary information, including site views in advance. And they can sign an extended, a form to extend it longer, but that's on, the onus is on the owner to be able, for us to be able to act on this, it's not on this board to accommodate the owner.
And this is Veronica speaking. The applicants were given all of that information that they could have waited to proceed with this application until summertime. By the information on this.
They, the, the court action was commenced at the end of April of this year, and we didn't receive the application until the deadline for the December
Right.
Meeting agenda.
But they had all summer.
What is, what is the ruling of the court currently? He's gotta fix those, those.
The court hasn't taken the matter up yet. They, I think they had an initial hearing, I couldn't tell you when, and then it got scheduled for another time. And that was to be in early January, and then I learned today it was moved to the end of February. And I don't know if that's per, if, I've shared the logistical issues of the lot view with the assistant county attorney that's now handling the case. And so I don't know if that led to the rescheduling of the matter until the end of February or not. That'd be my guess, but I don't know that for sure.
What, what's the history of the court action? Who, who identified the issue and when? And how did it end up in the court system? I mean, was he told 16 years ago that he got a problem?
It first came to the county's attention, I believe, in 2012. And we sent our normal letter, and I couldn't tell you when, but it was a few years after that that it reached the point of being forwarded to the attorney's office. And then since that time, the attorney's office has made multiple attempts to work with them to get this resolved.
So he's, 12 years ago, he was told, has done nothing, and then?
Now it's urgent because the court case is scheduled.
Okay.
This is Larry. Was any
Not urgent on our part.
Was any of this done with permit or is it legal at all, or where are we at with it?
Permits were pulled for the septic system, but it was never received county inspection. The house was permitted, but it wasn't built where it was supposed to meet the setback. And the applicant feels that the platforms and deck were included on the house permit application, but you'll see that when you receive the application in your packet, you can decide whether you feel that they're sufficiently depicted, but that's kind of beside the point. They don't meet the setback.
And the applicant is the one who did the, all the construction and stuff. He isn't, didn't buy it and this is now coming up. So all the, the non-conformances were created by the current owner. Okay. So your recommendation is that we keep it on the agenda for December?
Well, it's on the agenda for December. The question is, do we schedule a site visit for it? And then do you wanna act on it in December, which you can? Or you can also say, we'll table it to see if we can view it in January or February. It's the board's prerogative.
Does your, does your department have a drone?
No.
Maybe you should get one. We could all sit and watch TV while you run it.
This is Veronica speaking. I'm agreeing with Mike, I will not be walking across the ice in December 12th.
Did you say?
I will not be walking across the unknown ice December 12th.
There ain't gonna be ice on the 12th, 12th, was the 12th or 12th?
It was like three weeks away.
We're early this month, that's what.
It's two and a half weeks.
Yeah. There aren't gonna be enough ice to walk, I'll guarantee you that.
No.
Not this boy.
We will, if you need an answer, I would say that the board is saying, we will table it.
Yeah.
So then
And not do the view.
Probably what's most practical is to recommend that we delay it until January's agenda.
We may.
And readdress it in December? Because we know we're not gonna be able to view it, unless we all call on a boat, which I don't think any of us wanna do with two inches of ice. We're not gonna be able to view it, right?
We can revisit it in December meeting and see what
Yeah.
Ice is looking like at that point in snow and.
But it doesn't, doesn't make sense to put it on December's agenda then.
Well, it'll be on the agenda, but what, to tell the applicants that it's going to be tabled.
Right, yeah.
Until such time that we can view it.
Yeah.
Yeah, basically giving the applicant a courtesy. By telling him that we won't be able to view it, that we would table it.
I understand what you're saying.
We're just gonna.
It's going to be on the agenda. It's already on the agenda.
It's on the agenda.
But we're going, we're giving the applicant, Eric is going to be giving the applicant a courtesy that the board will not be able to view it, we won't be able to go to lot views.
Okay, okay, so it's not on the agenda for any action other than?
Than possibly tabling.
Yes.
Correct.
There's, there's no intent to view it or anything like that, okay?
You could act upon it if you'd like.
Okay.
What I'm hearing is you're willing to table it to see if you could view it at the January, February meeting.
Okay, I, I got it, okay.
In December, we might have no ice and a foot and a half of snow already, too. I guess I can theoretically see in January, February, we just
So we put it on the agenda and then we say, well, we were not able to view it, we're not gonna act on it unless we can view it, and then we delete. Okay.
Okay, I got it.
Or it's currently on the agenda and we're not able to view it and we deny it.
Yeah, yeah, I underst, now I understand this flow.
Yeah, yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, all right. Anybody care to make a motion to adjourn? I make, this is Veronica, I make a motion to adjourn.
This is Ken, I'll second it.
Okay, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Timothy, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Larry, how do you vote?
Larry, I vote aye.
This is Veronica, I vote aye, media adjourned.
When with Brown, I saw, the way it was written, it said it was, it's.